All right, I have six o'clock. We'll start our Port Valan December 13th special meeting with pledge allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to start out with an apology to my fellow commissioners. I did have a death in the family that made me miss the special meeting and made me miss the regular meetings. So we have a full agenda tonight with a lot of things that got tabled on to today. And we will plow forward with our agenda items. So purpose of today's meeting is to discuss the updates to the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements that we postponed from our October 2nd and December 4th meeting. Was that October 2nd or was that?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, boy.
I looked it up when I put the dates in here.
Hold a public hearing on proposed updates to the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements and take testimony from the public on what they would like to see added to or deleted from the 2017 plan. Set a date for a open public house about the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements. Discuss an item tabled at the December 4th meeting, a potential management agreement with another agency. Seek public input on such an agreement with a possible decision to pursue the next step in creating such an agreement. Hear a report from Pat McCaw on the proposed trail system. Adopt a resolution concerning payroll policies. Change our date of the January meeting because it falls on a holiday. Discuss changes to the Mason County Financial Services Account payable calendar. Elect 2018 Port Commission Chair and Vice Chair. First item under Old Business, discuss updates to the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements. Do we have documents on that?
There is one down below. I can send you the comp scheme from last year if you don't have it.
You can print it off over here.
Yeah.
I can email it to you.
No, I've read it. No, I've got it. So commissioners, under our 2017 plan, we had a list of prioritized projects that we would pursue in 2017 through 2019.
Project number one, establish an ongoing series of classes for new entrepreneurs. We accomplished that with the agreement with EDC and the Chamber and Enterprise for Equity. And they've been conducting those classes in this room.
Are we going to continue with that in 2018?
As long as there's interest in the program, yes.
Yeah, I think it's a good program. I would like to see us advertise it a little better. I know there was just a handful of people that were coming, but the people that I've talked to have said it's been worth their time coming.
Bring water and power to the Allen Marina is project number two. We have a grant application pending at the federal level to fund this. It went through the RCO, but it just, RCO is a pass-through. But we have, what RCO has to do is see if they think it's a viable project. And if they think it's viable, then they pass it up to the feds because this is a federally-funded project. And we've made that stage. So we're at the federal level now. And Congressman Kilmer said he will advocate for us. Project number three, complete the Sergeant Oyster House restoration project. We've made some progress on that and perhaps Commissioner Scott would like to talk about that.
Well, obviously it's been slow going. We've gotten some volunteers again. We had Bob Bonnet is the guy who has been doing the restoration of the windows. And I've been trying to do some fundraising, you know, on my own, but Bonnie and I have been, you know, going down to the legislature every year, to the Historical Caucus every year. And we're going to keep banging away at it until we get the money. Because it is going to take some money to finish. And, you know, I haven't been real comfortable about trying to get Walter on it, you know, a huge amount because we have some money in, or not us, but North Bay Historical Society has money, you know, money for some of the work, but not all the work. So that's kind of where we're at. And again, it's slowly going as you see the Tyvek has been put on to help preserve what's there so far. And again, you know, we did get a grant for siding, but we have to get everything ready for the siding before we can go get the siding. So that's kind of where we're at, slow.
How much work do you think will be done upland before it gets moved? Do you think it will be restored upland?
It needs to be restored upland. There might be a few things, like, here's been some of it, about taking out the concrete floor. And I think that might be the best thing to do, but then there's some, you know, difference of opinion about keeping it in because it's kind of what's holding it right now. But there is a way to do that. So once the whole base gets restored, the thought then is then we could pour in the concrete once it gets back over the water. And it'd be lighter, easier to maneuver for the movers to put it back over the water. Because it does have to be pretty much completely done before it gets over.
Before it'll get moved.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So we're working on our implementation strategy with that and we're moving along here, but we didn't expect it to be completed this year. So we all understand it's a long-term, ongoing project. Project number four, develop a first-class destination soccer and baseball combination sports complex. Excuse me. Excuse me. I think you all know this is a project near and dear to my heart, but we're working on it. Our timeline is to begin research and planning processes in early 2017, which we've done, searching for grant funding as well as suitable sites. The site is the big question mark right now, where that would be. We need at least 20 acres. And we want it to be as close to the Kitsap County-Mason County line as possible so we can draw teams to play there from there. There are no soccer fields between Silverdale and Shelton, so, you know, there's a built-in market there. I have reached out to some of our potential funding partners and the reaction has been very positive. We also, I, at the WPPA state meeting, I made a connection with the executive director of the Port of Ridgefield. And I've tried to get with somebody from Clark County about this, who owns Luke Jensen Sports Park, which is the model for this. And he has connected me to somebody there just last week.
Oh, good.
So that's.
And that's a county park?
Yes.
And it was funded with grant money?
Yes, 100% grant money.
And then sustained by user fees?
Yes. And they're actually, the user fees are generating more revenue than it takes to maintain it. So I think that's a good sign.
That's good, yeah.
So anyway, I will continue to pursue that, but that's where we're at there. Project number five, develop a commercial indoor light industrial park. I did have some discussions with David Overton about land. We've identified the site. The best site is being where the MTA parking right is going to go, if it ever goes there, at Log Yard Road. You know, build it in conjunction with that. But until something happens there, we're really just kind of marking time. So I think that's the project to carry over. Develop, project number six, develop a commercial indoor, indoor, outdoor shooting range. Again, the location is the big issue there. What we need is about 20 acres. That's in a, you know, like a bowl.
Yeah, zoned.
And when we developed the plan last year, the nearest facilities were all private membership clubs, Mason County Sportsman Association, which is on leased land at the Port of Shelton's Business Park, Kitsap Rifle and Revolver Club, which has been closed now for about two years due to all kinds of legal issues.
Where is that located? Is that off of Sebeck Hollow?
Yeah, on Sebeck Highway.
Okay.
Right next to what Camp Wesley Haris.
Yeah.
The one in Gig Harbor is going to close down. It's a case of the land has become more valuable than the business. So I just heard that the other day, that it's going to close down. The nearest indoor and outdoor shooting range is open to the public, or Bullseye Shooting Range at Tacoma, near the Tacoma Dome. The Marksman in Puyallup, and a new one just opened about a month ago, I think, down near Ponders, between Gravel Lake Drive and Bridgeport Way. Just drawing a blank.
One in Olympia.
Yeah, there is a new one in Olympia, too.
It's a club. T Brothers.
Right.
I can get us a tour of that, too, if you'd like to go see it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
I got a friend of mine.
But recreational shooting is just a huge industry. And, you know, according to the sheriff's office, last year there were 7,968 concealed weapons permits had been issued in Mason County in the past five years.
Wow.
And doesn't count people from Kitsap County who would use the facility or the number of gun owners without permits, which I'm sure is substantially, in either place, it would be customers. I think this has a lot of potential to generate substantial revenue from the port. And I had a conversation with our incoming commissioner yesterday about this. And, you know, I just asked him, what do you think about this? And he was like all over what a great idea it would be. You know, he understands the need for it by law enforcement and just the commercial potential for competitive shooting matches, the nearest competitive shooting places in Bend, Oregon.
No kidding?
Yeah. And they generate huge amounts of money.
What's the one up here on Highway 3, the outdoor?
It's a skeet shooting club.
So not a target shooting?
No.
You know, and I know with the Department of Natural Resources, a big hoopla, all that, trying to find, get DNR to designate an area so that there's better safety, and they won't.
Yeah, well, that.
Because of liability, you know, but.
Well, we've got to find a specific piece of property to do the big competitive shooting range. But if we were to do an indoor/outdoor one, that would really narrow down the scope of where we had to look, so.
Yeah, that's true. That's good.
Project number seven, develop Sweetwater Park. We haven't done anything with this because the whole thing's been on hold the entire year. And it's still on hold, so until we hear something from the Salmon Center.
Isn't there somebody at the Salmon Center that was assigned some hours a week or month to work on that?
I don't really know.
I thought they got an employee that was going to work on that.
I don't know. You know, when I talked to Dana a couple of weeks ago, she told me that she had talked to somebody at Department of Ecology and they said they don't have any heartburn about it. So I just said, get us that letter and, you know, we'll move forward, but.
So is she working on that or don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I haven't checked back with Dana, but every time I ask Mindy about it, it's like, oh. So I don't see that going anywhere until something else out of our control moves forward. So. And our goals and objectives, improvement of existing facilities owned by the Port of Allen, acquisition and development of land and facilities for industrial recreation and other purposes compatible with our mission, support the tourist industry throughout the port district, which we do extensively here, support retention of existing businesses and development of new businesses in light industry throughout the district. And we have a start on that with those entrepreneur classes and the other things that we do do. Support development of infrastructure necessary for economic development. Support activities which preserve, enhance, and protect the natural beauty and resources of North Mason. I think we do that on an ongoing basis. And developer partnership, develop and foster partnerships with support the mission of Allen. Support the mission of the Port of Allen. Excuse me.
Just Allen, huh?
Getting ahead of myself. And we've done that with the Chamber. We've done that with the EDC. I think our relationship with the EDC is probably stronger now than it's been for a while. We also, like Enterprise for Equity, the ones doing the entrepreneur classes, we've established a real good relationship with them. So I think, I think we've worked on our goals and objectives pretty strongly, but as far as our projects, you know, that's kind of where we're at with them. And I don't see this changing very much unless you all want to rearrange the priorities. This is the priority, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 is the priorities that you set last year.
The only Commissioner Scott had brought up, you know, are we really in a good position to be a light industry or commercial type of port when we've got Port of Bremerton to the north and Port of Shelton to the south, and that's really their main mission? I think you mentioned that our goals might be better suited as a recreational port, which is kind of what we are now.
I have to agree.
And, you know, when you talk to the Overtons, they want a shovel-ready project. Well, we're nowhere near that, so that, those projects that are going to go ahead up there with the MTA parking and the county does something up there, we're just not ready because we don't have the funding. So if I were to suggest pulling something off of here, it would definitely be the industrial park. Industrial park. I just don't know that that's in our 2017, 18, 19 future. And then to go along with the trail system that we've talked about in the past, maybe adding, being a partner in that. You know, it's always, how do we sustain it? Sweetwater Park, how do we sustain the ongoing maintenance, the cleanup and things like that? You know, we don't have the answers to that yet, but do we want to see that type of thing? Do we want to partner with that? And that's the question I have for you guys, my fellow commissioners. Do we want to be in the recreational part and the?
Do we want to be in the industrial park business or the recreational business?
Yeah. I don't think we're going to be able to do both with the current funding stream that we have.
I think that's the question we need to answer.
Yeah.
Thanks for springing that up, Scott. Because I, you know, that question that that person said, why would we compete when it's already there? And really, they're right. And with the Tohuya Forest, you know, there are people that travel hours to get to this forest even. So we have a tourism already active people. And of course, you know, if we do the trail system, it'll be a really good place to live, you know.
To state parks.
Yeah, true. That's right.
A place of water.
You know, I forgot, was I talking to you maybe, Pat? I'm not sure who I was talking to, but about trying to sell, get businesses here, too. You know, they have to make sure that they have good reasons for here. I know that we do need good places to live. That's really important for businesses to come in and locate. It's not everything, but it does have a big impact. We do need, we do have infrastructure, which is good in town, but anyway.
Safe neighborhoods, good schools, good infrastructure. If we can partner in that recreation, if we can partner in that, I think that's a better direction for us with our current funding, our, you know, our abilities.
I agree.
I will have to agree, too.
Well, we need input, of course, you know, from everybody, but I think that's a good.
That's what the public hearings were.
Yeah, that's right. So I'm, I think that might be a good idea. Because that light industrial park, you know, ever since I came on in 2000, I was trying to get something. And the only, the biggest reason, my motive, was to make sure that people understood the Port of Allen is a big district, just to bring a connection. It's not just Allen, it's Belfair, you know, it's the Tri-Lake area. It's a big district. And that was my whole point. So, you know, if we were to get the soccer field up there or, you know, something to bring it all together, it's kind of like the Port of Bremerton, they own the Port Orchard Marina. But everybody pretty much knows that. So it's, you know, it is just education, but a presence, so.
Go watch them.
Yeah.
Well, I will take the industrial park off the plan and.
Yeah, unless somebody else has some heartburn over it, you know, but we can talk about it.
That would be the recommendation and.
And maybe add the trail project to it.
Just get some public comment on deletion and adding of the trails. The trails is a project that's worthwhile for us. It's in our, in our mission.
Well, in our district, you know, that's one thing.
It's all in our district, yeah.
And I know that people use it, Eller, a lot. You know, there's a lot of recreation opportunities here.
Well, you know, I think that, this is an observation for somebody that doesn't live here. There's a lot of duplication of effort for things here. And I think rather than us try to do what other people are doing, what we need to do is do something that is different and stands out for us.
Have a niche.
Yes.
And, you know, the sports park is definitely it, but boy, what a dream that is.
Hey, I'm on it.
Oh, you are.
I am on it.
I think that one would be viable.
And I've discussed with you all a plan to approach a particular business person about, you know, buying the land for us, so.
You know, if.
I'm going to put together a little prospectus to show before I sit down with them, so.
Oh, good, okay.
But I think everything else in our, I mean, it's all kind of, you know, we should always be on the lookout for salt waterfrontage, opportunities for recreation on the waterfront. And, you know, of course, we have to maintain our existing facilities and improve on them as we can.
Make them accessible.
Our facilities are in good shape right now.
They are, yeah.
Everything is in, you know, from a maintenance and, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for here, but, you know, from a standpoint of them being in good condition, everything working, everything fixed, you know, not needing anything and not needing any kind of repair or maintenance in the foreseeable future other than routine things. We're in great shape.
That's good. Yay.
And we've done a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we spent a lot of 2015 and part of 2016 doing that, but it's done. So everything's in great shape now.
That's good.
You know, occasionally, we got to grade the parking lot here and the one out at the offshore, but that's about all we have for ongoing stuff and replacing light bulbs and things.
Yeah, that's great.
Santa cans.
Yeah.
Um, under tourism, we talk about increasing our supported activities. You know, Richard Bell was here and he talks about the permanent stage.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that a permanent stage is what would do this for us, but some second structure on the property somewhere, you know. So we could have music in the park, we could have events in the park. And right now, we're having a handful, but, you know, could we be full every weekend doing something and promoting people coming here and spending their money here and someday staying here?
Well, I think a good permanent stage built right would get a lot of use.
If it could be a dual purpose.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking of a second gazebo, that maybe, you know, kind of gazebo's our theme and, and, yes.
Comment. Mindy's working on a little amphitheater.
Right, yeah.
Hey, just for a point of word, why don't you open the public hearing?
Well, let's, I want to finish this up first and then I'll.
Oh, okay.
And I want to do the public hearing in order, too, so.
Okay, because I was going to say then, everybody can comment and we'll.
So let's just move on here.
Sorry.
So, yeah, as far as tourism goes, I think that we revisit, because Richard Bell says that the Allen Community Association has some funds for it. I don't think it would be enough funds, but something that we could partner with them. And of course, you know, they're going to want to use it for Allen Day's Gooey Duck Fest, but we can use it the rest of the year. And, you know, I know that there's local musicians who want to play and there's other, there will be other venues for them and.
Maybe we should talk to the Chamber about stuff like that. You know, I know the Port Orchard Chamber sponsors stuff in the summertime.
Rock the dock.
Yeah. Every Thursday, there's music at the gazebo there on the waterfront. So let's see if our Chamber would be interested in doing something like that.
It's a good idea.
In a dual purpose. I mean, maybe we have the, you know, where the way we set up the weddings now, it's just on the grass, but maybe now we set up a wedding on that structure and the reception happens on the bigger gazebo. And Palmsville House, they call it the Pavilion, but it's basically a gazebo and they do music there and they have permanent outdoor seating around it, so it's benches and it's got electricity to it.
One Port Orchard is the same way.
Yeah. So we'll talk about business and industry. Any other comment from anybody else?
Not right now.
No, thanks, I'll go away here from the public.
Yeah.
We'll come back to that on, under new business. So back under old business. Potential management agreement with another agency. We want to seek public input on such an agreement with a possible decision to pursue the next step in creating such an agreement.
Okay, Commissioner Scott tabled this. She has to be the one to take it off the table.
Okay, well, we'll take it off. I move that we take it off.
One sec.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
We'll move it on to today's agenda.
Okay. All right, well, I was working on this right up until after 5:00. If you notice what time I sent you guys an email with this. Couple of weeks ago, we were approached via email by one of the Port of Duwato Commissioners asking for a meeting to exchange information about small ports working together while still remaining autonomous. We took this to mean discussing the possibility of us managing their day-to-day business operations. There is an established precedent for this. Port of Gawaco manages the Port of Chinook and closer to home. Port of Brownsville does it to a lesser extent for the Port of Keyport. These management agreements have been very successful for both sets of ports. And as you know, Port of Gawaco won the WPPA 2016 Innovation Award for pioneering the management agreement concept with the Port of Chinook. So Commissioner Cooper, Leanne, and myself met with Duwato Commissioner Ted Edwards on November 29th and discussed what they needed as well as the general parameters of what a management agreement might look like. I've also since chatted with their commission chair, Ray Mo. Since the two of them can't legally talk without it being a public meeting, I made Commissioner Mo aware that Commissioner Edwards had approached us. He said that if you all elected to move forward and make a management proposal to the Port of Duwato, he would be open to exploring such an arrangement. Now, considering all the past mergers or merger rumors, before anyone goes off the deep end about this, about being some backroom conspiracy for us to merge with Duwato, I want to state very clearly and unequivocally on camera for the record, this is not what that meeting was about, nor is anyone on either side suggesting merging would be a good idea. It isn't. Merging makes absolutely no financial sense for us or for Duwato. And I want to be sure that we nip any and all speculation in the bud right here, right now about that, now or in the future. Merging is a bad idea for both ports. With that said, a management agreement could be a win-win situation. Commissioner Cooper asked me to put this on the agenda for a discussion as he wants the board to evaluate whether we want to take the next step forward and pursue the possibility of entering into a management agreement as well as discuss what the pitfalls might be. If you all decide to pursue this, it goes without saying, we'll want the entire process to be as transparent as possible. to be as transparent as possible and should include a public meeting in Duwato so their citizens can weigh in on it and get the questions they will undoubtedly have answered as well. I've done some preliminary research and analysis of the numbers based on Duwato's 2018 budget. In my view, the management agreement does make a certain amount of sense and represents financial win for both ports. Duwato would get more timely, accurate and detailed financial information, plus a cash management system with more accountability than its experience for a number of years at a significantly lower cost than it's been paying. Depending on how a final arrangement is structured, it could also include routine maintenance of its facilities. Since our port would essentially be an independent contractor, except for the Commissioners, Duwato will eliminate all its payroll expenses for an Executive Director. This means no state retirement, LNI, Social Security, Medicare or 941 tax costs. Based on the $40,000 a year budgeted for an Executive Director and for income tax purposes, declaring as married with one dependent, in 2007, those costs should have been approximately $8,400, over and above the Executive Director's $40,000 salary.
That was 2017.
If an Executive Director were declared as single, those costs would be even more. There's also savings for them on mileage, travel and in several other areas. What we get is a new revenue stream for doing the exact same things we do here and already have systems, practices, policies and procedures in place for. Switch to the biased accounting software is going to free up productive time for us to do this. And while there be no co, while there will be no co-mingling of funds, try to say that quickly, we can easily track Duwato's finances using separate standalone bookkeeping system, just as we're ready, just as we do for each of our other business operations. Just like Gawaco and Chinook, both ports will continue to operate autonomously. Duwato Commissioners will make all the decisions for their port, just as they do now. Our staff will implement those decisions and provide suggestions about more efficient management, new revenue streams. But it's 100% up to the Port of Duwato Commissioners to accept or reject those suggestions. I believe this could work pretty smoothly once we got all the kinks worked out of it. The main questions I see would revolve around staffing the building, security and dealing with the park when it's open. There's also the question of how much time needs to be spent cleaning up the messes that exist there in terms of IT issues, reworking the budget so it's accurate, cleaning out all the file cabinets to determine what records to send to the state archivists and what to keep in the office. That said, if we can implement electronic public record systems, we're working on here, scanning those documents, saving and cataloging them, make that operation fairly simple to manage. So, that's my observation and my analysis of the situation. So, question?
So, we would have no role in any of the operations except the Port of Duwato, but you'd be our employee?
Yeah.
You'd be the Port of Allen's employee, but...
Yeah. Port of Allen would basically be a contractor, the Port of Duwato.
But anything that they wanted to do, you would just implement?
Yeah.
We would have no say-so in it?
No.
You know, I, I'll give them my opinion, just like I do you guys. I mean, I would essentially become their Executive Director and LeAnn would become essentially their Operations Manager, just like she is here.
So what would it cost them? Or, I mean, does, 'cause, you know, I know what you had to go through here. And it probably wasn't in quite as bad shape as Duwato.
No.
So, it will take some time.
I think what we need to do is get in here and look and see what the situation is before we can really say, you know, this is...
Yeah, if they want that here, right.
So they want a proposal, a management agreement proposal?
Well, when we talked to Ted, he said they'd be open to that. Ray Mo said they would be open to it. They, they didn't say, "Yeah, we want one." They said, "But if you want to give us one, we'll look at it."
'Cause I just wonder, I mean, their Executive Director quit last month. They don't have an Executive Director for this month. The Commissioners are trying to fill that role. I don't know how successfully. I mean, I'm not, I'm not there, so...
I don't know either.
They only have two Commissioners right now, too, so it's gotta be very difficult.
You know, I can't speak to any of that because I haven't...
But I don't want to rush into anything, so I'm just thinking maybe we, we look at helping them out in the interim or...
Well, we, we've offered help. Said, you know, anything that we can help you with, we will. And...
But that would have to be in some form of a formal agreement for...
I think so.
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you need from us?
From you guys? What I need from you guys is you either want to move forward with this or you don't. You know, if you don't want to move forward with it, it's over. If you do want to take the next step, I can meet with their Commissioners and...
So you would have to, you would go to their public meeting and, and speak to them and...
Yeah. I'd have to draft up a proposal and I'd want you guys to look at that first and see what you thought. And then say, you know, here's where it is. And then I'm sure there'd be some negotiations.
Okay.
One thing I think, you know, if the Port of Duwato wants it, and it, to me, it would be like, it would be a really good thing right now, but it doesn't have to be forever, until they can get back on their feet.
Yeah.
Get back into fiscal strength again and then find a good, you know, director or a manager and then go from there. I think this would...
The problem is, for what they pay, they're not gonna really get a top-quality manager. That, and, and that is what I see as the biggest issue they're gonna have.
But it might be like the chicken and the egg, though, because they didn't really, they weren't on top of it necessarily in managing it, you know, 'cause Chris was there for decades and, and it was just by hand. And so they weren't able to get the kind of funds to take care of things, so.
And do they need a full-time director?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I mean, my observation is they don't. But somebody needs to, you know, I think the community, I've watched some of the videos of their meetings. And what I'm getting is, my sense of it is, the community wants that building open on some kind of regular schedule.
Sure.
And we can't staff that. We don't have the resources to do that. So, you know, that's an issue that they'll have to address.
So you want us to direct you to go to their public meeting and they can advertise and you'll draft a proposal to bring them?
Well, the first thing, I'd like to meet with their Commissioners and see if they want a proposal. I mean, if they don't want one, you know, you heard Ted, "Yeah, we'd like to do something. We need to do something. We just don't know what."
They're in a bit of a pinch right now, so...
And, you know...
I feel it's the right thing to do to, to try to help them out. If they want our help, if the community wants our help, if...
Yeah.
I mean, that's the thing, is if it's not...
You know, we, we offered to do...
If it's not welcome, then walk away.
Then, yeah. You know, we offered to help them when they got that audit back and said, "Can we do something to help you square this stuff away?" And, you know, we didn't really get a response. You know, thanks for the offer. That was it. So, you know, if they don't want our help, they don't want it. I mean, and that's just that.
What do you think?
Well, I think we should offer officially, you know, just at least to reach out. Okay. 'Cause if we tell you not to, then, you know, they have at least the choice to say no.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, I think if you don't try, you're not being a good neighbor.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Yeah.
If we can help them without hurting us.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. That's my concern is, you can't spend 40 hours a week here and 40 hours a week there, so...
No.
Yeah, what's it gonna take and maybe get, get an idea? And when is their meeting?
Tonight.
Tonight.
Is that their normal meeting?
Yeah.
Special meeting.
Oh, special. When's their normal?
Is it the second?
Yeah, I don't know when.
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday?
So you'll, you'll try to get on their agenda for the third Wednesday.
I'll see if I can, yeah. But, you know, if you guys don't want to move forward with this, then you don't, and that's the end of it. But if you want me to take the next step with them, I will.
Well, I think you should, and if you need a motion, I will. It just...
I mean, this isn't something we would have done if they hadn't approached us. And I want to make that real clear to everyone.
I think we should offer.
So we need that in a form of a motion?
It probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't hurt.
Would you get a seat of the committee first?
Yeah, let's, we can. I, it's up to the chair, you know. I think we should.
Well, we have public comment as number four and it's, people, people have been concerned that I've gone out of order before, so I'd rather not go out of order.
But it's listed, right? Seat of public comment on the agreement. Can I read?
Oh, yeah, correct. So, yes, let's take some public comment on this then. Thanks for pointing that out. If you could step up to the mic, please?
Thank you, Ken Van Busker. I tried to find out what this meeting was about the last several days and asked what agency it was and never got a response. And I'm curious why this wasn't mentioned in the Executive Director's report at the last meeting that you have folks had met with, with the Port of Duwato. I don't think it's a good idea at this time. I think it's appropriate to wait till Mr. Jackson comes on. They are placing a new Commissioner this evening, I think, over there at Port of Duwato. It, it hasn't been very transparent so far. And the Port of Duwato has a lot of findings against it. And there's potential litigation that they're gonna be involved with. So I'd, I'd urge the Port to, Port of Allen, to stay back from it for a while.
Do you know what the litigation is?
Yeah, I'm not at liberty to really talk about it.
Is it public records litigation or is...
I'm not certain. There's some, some issues. So there's, you know, I don't, I don't want our port to get mired down in, in their business, so. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Yeah, come on up.
My name is Earl Liddings. Hi, guys. And, yeah, I, I just want to reiterate the mess of Duwato. And I also want to go back for the two decades of the Commissioners that also helped create this mess, including Ted Edwards and his wife Penny Edwards, who have been the Commissioners for quite a few years. This mess should have been handled years ago. Should have been policies and procedures set in place to make sure that there was a checks and balance, that there isn't missing funds or no bookkeeping records. You have the Commissioner picking up the money from the campground of only like 30 or 40 spots and depositing it himself for decades. So you never know exactly what's taking place down there. So my, my advice right now, moving forward, is that listening to your Executive Director talking about coming in for a possibility of $40,000 a year, that's unrealistic. The campground's closed now for six months of the year. So there's only six months of the year that it's going to be open. It doesn't take a $40,000 a year professional to actually be managing a little port. And the additional thing that we have here is that the residents in Duwato live in Duwato to get away from tourism, to get away from the public. They live there. They own their land. They want to preserve Duwato. So Duwato's comprehensive plan, when it actually comes up to the table, the residents that have already voiced about a 45 or 50 people showing, which is the largest meeting I've ever seen of residents, even for larger ports, they want conservation, they want preservation, they want to have their environment for their neighbors, for the Port of Allen to enjoy, for the Port of Duwato to enjoy, for the Tahuya residents to enjoy, for the public to come and enjoy. But they do not want more marinas, more campgrounds or any development. And so the problem I have with the Port of Allen moving forward with a business director is specifically what he stated earlier, of other means of revenue. There really isn't a revenue base in Duwato. In fact, if the Port of Duwato can't manage itself, I don't even know if it should be a port.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Pat, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Could I respond to Earl?
Sure, yeah.
Couple of things I think you have a misconception about. We're not gonna go in there and do anything that the Commissioners don't want. You know, it's not our job to go in there and say, "Here's what you should be doing." That's up to them. So I want to be sure that you understood that. And we didn't say that it should be, you know, they should pay us $40,000. We did, what we did was say, "Here's what they're paying. Here's how much they would save just by not having to deal with that." So, you know, that's where that number came from.
And I think that before you have an actual discussion of working with the Port of Duwato, you should wait to actually have your new Commissioner. The Port of Duwato should have their new Commissioner. Because the existing Commissioner you're dealing with is part of the reason why we're having problems today.
And the whole thing here was they came to us and it was, you know, should we move forward and on what time schedule? You know, we believe the new, our new Commissioner should have input. And he actually, I met with him yesterday and talked to him and told him we had been approached about this and what are your thoughts? And his thoughts were pretty much the same as Judy and Scott, you know. They want us to do it, let's, you know, make a proposal. If they don't, don't. So, that's it. I mean, this isn't like something that we feel we have to do or want to do. And it's not a case of us trying to take over that port. That doesn't make any sense for us financially. Doesn't make any sense for them.
Earl, I have a question.
We're trying to use help here.
I have a question, Earl. Do you think that if we did just reach out to them, because in my mind, we're just reaching out for help. Do you think that they, particularly one of the Commissioners would jump on it and that's what he wants and my way or the highway? Is that what you're concerned about?
No, I'm just concerned that the actual citizens in the Port of Duwato are not in favor of working with a pro-development port. Now, I understand you just turned, changed it to pro-tourism. They're not pro-tourism either. So I don't think the actual relationship is a good blend. I think you have a Port Commissioner that's a good visionary, but a terrible follow-through. And he's looking for help for his vision, but he's in disconnect with the actual citizens that live out there. So I don't know, and a lot of people don't really care to get involved because they live out there to be away from people. They're introverts. So you could be stirring up a large, mean environment that's been silent for very many years. And so I'd be cautioning about any development plan or working with them. They need to find a good accountant that can come in and clean up their books. And then they can just hire that accountant on a weekly basis. And it's $10,000 or $15,000 a year. It doesn't need to be development plans. It doesn't need to be a traditional income revenue streams. I mean, I don't really see the Port of Duwato at all. And I know for our district specifically, who has been the brunt of all the development in the Port of Duwato. Our district has the port building. It has the access to the beach. It has the campground. The other two districts don't have anything. And the direction is gonna be to shift it to those people. And when they see the growth moving into their neighborhood for the campgrounds, the RVs, whatever they may want, it's gonna additionally, change is gonna happen, but they want to preserve it. It's kind of the end of the road. And like I said the last meeting, it's not the end of the United States, but it is the end of the road, unless you want to drive all the way around to the Olympics. But it needs to be handled with sensitive gloves. I'm not pro-Allen by any means. And I, I really like Mr. Corporal. I think he has a great sense of directions. He has great communication. I just don't trust the Port of Duwato existing Commissioners. They create this mess and those are the ones that you're dealing with. So transparency would have been nice earlier on, and it's been broken from day one over the last two years, actually, probably the last 30 years. There's a lot of uncertainties. So, just look in our eye.
Well, let me say two things. You know, we had intended to discuss this at our meeting two weeks earlier, but because Scott was out of town, we did not. And that's the only reason we did not, so.
And our Commissioner, who I'm getting texts from right now from citizens at the Duwato meeting, I will be asked if he had this discussion. He wasn't transparent again. And this is a revolving door.
Okay, well, that's, you know, we don't know anything about that.
But that's the issue.
And the only other thing I want to say is the direction of our port, that we want to take our port.
It's not.
Has nothing to do with the direction...
With Duwato.
The Port of Duwato Commissioners want to take theirs. You know, our, our role, as we see it, would just be to implement, you know, policies and procedures and stuff that works.
I'm a resident of both ports.
You're a neighbor.
Yeah. So I, I do care about, and I'll ask some public comment on one of your items there later, but I'm not, thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for being here.
So after hearing public comment, do we still want Larry to go up to the public meeting, their next public meeting?
I think you should still ask, even though it may be bad timing, just, I mean, again, one of them came to you.
That's it, you know?
See if there's anything we can do to help them out.
We can always say no, too, you know? I just want to be neighborly, you know? If they ask, I just want to...
Standing an olive branch.
I mean, it has to work for both ports for it to work.
You know, and again, Earl...
If it doesn't work for us, there's no point in going any further.
Yeah.
And in all fairness, if it probably came from our new director or another commissioner, it'd probably have more transparency, more willing feeling, it'd probably be more receptive as well. I'm not against it as well. I think the port needs help, but I don't like the way it was approached.
Do you have a new director or do you mean the one that just...
Raymo, Mr. ...
Oh, the new commissioner. I got you.
We had two new port commissioners this year and a retired director that was in the, not even on for a year, so it's a mess.
Yeah. Did you get a new commissioner other than Raymo? Is there a new one now?
They're appointing one tonight.
Do you know who it is?
There's only two individuals. I don't know who, I'm not there, they're doing it now.
Got you. Oh, thank you. Thanks.
All right, so if we want Larry to go to the next public meeting at the Port of Duarte, we'll take that in the form of a motion.
Gosh, I almost hesitate to, but I think we should. Well, I move that we instruct Larry to reach out to Duarte in regard to a management.
Second.
A motion on the floor with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to old business, item C, your report from Pat McCullough on the proposed trail plan. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you, Pat, for coming.
Sure.
Yeah, probably up to the podium.
Do it on there. Microphone and camera.
I just burnt up all the cards.
Give me a call, I would have printed it for you.
I'm going to read it.
Thank you.
You should have just called, I would have printed a briar.
I'm Pat McCullough here to speak on a trail concept for, which everybody thinks, and I like the name, too, the Hood Canal Discovery Trail. But the trail would run, the ultimate trail would run from Belfair State Park all the way to Allen. The idea's been in discussions for years around here. And I was the restoration engineer on the Twingle Project, the Belfair State Project, Park Project, the Beards Cove Project, and the Union River Project. So I have a fair amount of knowledge about, about the area. Gorgeous area. Turns out it's a perfect 5K from Theller, I've already told you this, but it's a perfect 5K from Theller to the park. If you run on a 10K, turn around and go back. The proposal, as like I told you before, to get state involved, we need a 10-foot wide paved trail. I've talked to the local state people a little bit and Mindy is, from Pacific Northwest, Mindy Harlow from the Pacific Northwest Salmon Center, has, is attempting to, to get the projects on the county comprehensive plan. As I said earlier, we're looking for a public sponsor and we have to have a public agency sponsor the project. The economic benefit to the community is considerable, I think. The, everybody I've talked to about the projects really gets excited about the whole idea of being able to get from Belfair State Park to Theller without getting killed on the road. I couldn't, when I moved out here, the traffic on Belfair High, on the SR 300 was about 2,000 or 3,000 cars a day. Now I think it must be well over $5,000 a day. It's just crazy. But at any rate, we slowed down a bit because you have a new commissioner coming on. And secondly, I've been busy and we're, I can tell you from my perspective, and I've done hundreds of projects, this project's going to happen. Now, what I would like to see is I'd like to see the Port of Allen involved. I do have a different idea for you if you're interested. The county is interested in the project. They're completing a transportation study in the Belfair area and their people and I people have been talking and they're really excited about the project. And I think it's going to be on their list, so to speak. I thought that it would be an ideal project for the Port of Allen because, and that's why I came to you first, because it's everything you do. And it's, you know, just seems to me to be a really ideal project. But I need to know if you're interested. If you're not interested, hey, like I told my son when he went with his wife for two years, you know, put the poor girl out of her misery, either get rid of her, or marry her. Both of them got married. Unfortunately, one of them got divorced. That didn't work together. So what I'm here tonight is, I do have a proposal for you. Apparently, the Hood Canal Salmon Hands Group or Pacific Northwest Salmon Center is willing to take on the task of doing the grant applications. They're willing to essentially take care of the project throughout as a component of the port, if the port's interested in that kind of a relationship.
Are you talking about maintenance of it or...
No, at this point, we haven't talked about that.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm talking about getting the grants, getting the money, building, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And they have a lot of experience doing this. I'm not here saying I'm going to be the engineer that has to go through a process. What I have been doing is, up to this date, I've donated about $24,000 of my time in terms of preliminary engineering in the project at the request of Brian Peterson and several other people. And I intend to, Krieger and I are now are working on Phase Two, which is the Belfair section. And ultimately, we're going to put together some preliminary engineering all the way to Allen. I want to see this project happen. The, I think we're probably looking at a total project cost for the whole thing somewhere around $10 million. Back when I was young, that was a lot of money. These days, it's not that much. So I guess what, what I'd like to do is find out if the port is, is interested to be the primary sponsor of the project, that is, you know, you, Larry and I worked together or whatever to get this thing funded and get it going. Or maybe put together a deal with the Pacific Northwest Salmon Center to, and partner up with them, with you being the public face, either of those options. If you're not interested in either of those options, then Randy Netherlone and I are going to sit down and have a discussion, see what we can do. If Randy Netherlone's not interested, then we go state parks and so on and so forth. The state parks have really excited about the idea of being able to connect Belfair State Park to Theller. Joel Pillar has, you know, written me an email saying they really like, like the concept. But we have a long way to go. Right now, this is just a vision. The vision is going to change a lot as we move along. The Department of Fish and Wildlife has a Wilderness Lands program for trails in their property. We would have to go through that process. We've got a lot of stuff to do. My, my involvement in the project, if you had to pay for it at this point, would be considerable. But I'm, this is a, this is a goal now and I've done hundreds of projects, but to me, this is, ever since I finished the, the new bridge on the Olympic Discovery Trail across the Dungeon S and saw how that trail down there coalesced the entire community. And now when I go down and visit the project, for example, they just put Christmas lights on it and everything. It just, you can't believe how, how, I didn't realize how much something like this brings a community together and provides, we have no place for people to go. They go down to Theller, they can exercise, but we need more of that type of facility in the area.
My biggest thing is to have an ability to get down Highway 300 without getting killed.
Get killed. You've got exactly two feet on each side.
Exactly.
And that's so they don't trim the grass.
Large neighborhoods, but can be stirred by a trail system into town.
Yeah.
How long did the Discovery, the Squim Discovery Trail take?
Pardon?
How long did it take to complete that from start to finish?
Oh, that was quite a marvelous experience. Glad you asked that question. We, I'd been working with Jamestown Skollam Tribe for two years, putting together fixes, okay? All of a sudden, the big cotton trees that were protecting the structure were washed out and we knew that the whole structure was going to go. And turn up, the structure went. And it went in February. We started, I, I put together a 100% funding package for it. They went through a consultant selection process and selected myself and OTAC to do the actual project. We started that project in the middle of May and we were done with the construction by the middle of December. When somebody wants a project, I've been doing this long, when a community really wants a project, you can really move quickly. And the people down there in Squim, I'll tell you, to have that bridge out, it's a 750-foot bridge, to have that structure not there and to have to go down to the highway and go around was, was a great, great discomfort. And it was, we had a big ceremony out there with the cedar smoke and, you know, it was really cool. One of the most exciting projects I've ever worked on and I, and I did, for example, Tremont, that was one of my projects, when we put in Port Orchard, Tremont Street, the bridge and all that. Wogaway, I've done a lot of big projects, but that was really fun. And when we were in there in 1st of Ju, 1st of August, we had thousands of pink salmon in the river. And we had three days to get the piling out of the river or we'd have to wait all year.
Right.
And anyway, I won't tell you the whole story, but it was really a lot of fun. But I was, whenever I go down there now to the project, and we have art in the project, Indian art and all kinds of stuff, it's just so incredible how much people coalesce around that nature center there at, in Squim. And of course, we don't, we have a lot more than 15 inches of rain here, but, but I'm convinced if we can put this trail together, it'll be, it'll, I mean, imagine going all the way off highway from Belfair State Park or pass Belfair State Park, because you go down to Effindol actually, from there all the way to Theller, off, off highway. It'd be just fantastic. That's all I have to say.
It would be a tourism draw.
Well, and even support our community, what's there and help the community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Beards Cove, Beards Cove, Sandill.
Well, I think, I think Larry's idea of an athletic center is incredibly cool. They have one, my family lives over in Pasco, right next to, what do they call it, 600 or some, that athletic center over there?
The 600?
When we started, they started living there, there was nothing there but some houses. Now the place is a virtual city. The athletic center, there's three large hotels or four large hotels.
It's pretty cool. Bryce played soccer over there once. Pretty cool.
They come from all over the Pacific Northwest to come there, you know, to play their regional sports games and all that stuff. It's really, really cool.
Well, and part of ours is to have jobs, too, you know, and keep people here.
Yeah.
So let me ask you a question. So if we were to become the sponsor, you know, I see us, knowing our financial situation, being the sponsor in name, aren't we? Is that a sign of, no? Does that work or, you know, are we expected to make a big financial commitment?
We have to fly through the port. Mindy's willing to do the grant applications pro bono.
Okay.
Join my team. Don't tell my clients about this. She's willing to join the team to prepare the grant applications. The, realize, of course, that there's all kinds, I work for all kinds of nonprofits. And the way most of them fund their organizations is they do projects like this. And they take a cut. That's just the way it works.
Well, yeah, to support.
And now, the problem, what we don't know, of course, is if we can get 100% funding, several of the projects I've done in the last several years have been 100% funded. I just finished Beards Cove, that was 100%.
The restoration of the community park there?
Yeah. Well, we included that as part of the project.
Okay.
I don't know any of that yet. That's just part of the deal. I was working with Patty on the senior center funding. You know, we had two great big dinners over at the inn. When Cock, Cock, what's his name, Frank? Cock or whatever. Anyway, he was head of the ways and means for the house.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Chow.
Chow, that's it, yeah. He was there twice and came up with $1.7 million bucks. I don't know how the funding's going to come together, but I know that we do need a public sponsor and we do need to get going. And the other thing we need, really, really need, is enthusiasm about the vision. That's the biggest thing. Like I told Patty for years when I was working with her, I said, "You're the keeper of the vision. You know, you've got the vision." And I said, "If you lose that vision, that project's not going to come together." Well, it did. It was a beautiful project, wonderful thing.
Yeah, great job.
And that's when we did the Port Orchard bypass. The mayor of Port Orchard, Carol, Carol Salt...
Paul Towers.
Yeah, Paul Towers. And Bill Mahan kept the vision. Who was the guy you used to own the tire store downtown? Dave Livy? Dave Livy used to be the swing vote. Well, the project got canceled three times because Dave had a bad dinner or something. I don't know what. But we, can you imagine what downtown Port Orchard would look like right now if they didn't have the Port Orchard bypass? It's, in fact, it's got back to that point again. But at any rate, so we need enthusiasm from the port. They're going to be involved. This is a, this can be a fun thing, but we gotta, you gotta be in it with us, you know, that's the thing. And I know people have said, "Well, why don't you go to the county?" Well, county's fantastic. I love the county. The county's got a lot of stuff going on. And I really do, they have a ton of stuff going on, all over the county. And I know Randy is fantastic and he's really enthusiastic, but the people that he would have working on this project have a lot of things going, going on. We, when I got funding for the Belfair, you know, water quality study downtown, the drainage study, that was five years ago. And still nothing has come out of that process. So I don't know. My gut tells me that, that the county would be fine, but I think the port would be a better sponsor, so that's my pitch.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming down.
All right. I'm going to move on to new business, resolution number 391 concerning paid sick leave and overtime policies.
One final thing I'd like to say is, I don't know when you're going to make your decision what you're going to do, but I appreciate it if you make it.
Be soon.
Sure.
Before the, I don't know if we can, before the end of the year, are we going to meet another time?
That's up to you guys.
Okay.
Well, you don't have to, especially me, I didn't know. We need grant applications.
Yeah, that's true.
For the RTPO and, you know, all that kind of stuff. Probably need to be in by, by March.
Yes.
First thing we need to do is go economic development, probably get some startup money and whatever, but we've got a process to go through, so we can do this.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have resolution 391. This was in our packet, I read it. It's a...
You want to read it?
I will read it.
I'm going to give this to Taylor.
Sure, thank you.
Be it resolved by the commissioners of the Port of Allen as follows. Whereas the Port of, the board of commissioners of the Port of Allen have met and considered the proposed updates to its payroll policy... the proposed updates to its payroll policies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence and testimony presented, hereby resolves to adopt the following payroll policies and procedures as required by both state and federal law. Beginning on January 1st, 2018, all port employees will accrue paid sick leave at a minimum rate of one hour for every 40 hours worked. This includes all part-time and seasonal workers. Paid sick leave will be paid to the employees at their normal hourly compensation. Employees who work on recognized holidays will be paid at a rate of one and a half times their normally hourly compensation. Adopted this 13th day of December 2017.
I move that we accept a resolution 391.
A motion on the floor to accept resolution number 391.
I'll second Ted.
Have a second to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Those are federal policies, and the wording came right out of the federal directives, though.
Set date for January meeting? I do not have my calendar, and I...
January 1 is the first Monday.
And I do not want to...
Can we do it the 3rd?
To commit my double book, sorry, Del. Let me go to the calendar here real quick. So January 1st is the holiday, and it is...
I would like to have it the 3rd.
I could do it the 2nd.
Well, I can do that, too.
Could you?
Yeah.
That way...
Of course you better.
If we postpone a meeting, we can have it the following day.
Yeah, I can do it the 2nd.
And it's still a regular meeting. Could you do the 2nd, Del? Tuesday the...
No, he's not gonna be there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, good, yeah.
It'll be 10.
Well, then, if somebody can contact Ted, Larry?
Okay, I'll let him know.
2nd.
Tuesday the 2nd of January. Actually have one thing on my calendar that day that is really... Possible policy adoption for accounts payable. All right, this has to do with how the county's going to run their vouchers?
Yes.
And is that in our packet here? I didn't see what that is. Did you see that, Larry?
I didn't see it here, I should, but I've got it right here.
Did you get that?
Uh, I think I got the same packet you did.
Okay.
Got the resolution, the comprehensive scheme.
So what does that mean?
So they will only be doing, we have to turn our vouchers in on the green dates, and only twice a month.
Oh, so it's twice a month, like, case in point for the audience's sake, it's January 5th, January 19th is when we have to submit, so it's, uh...
So green's the deadline?
I think it's eight months of the year. It's not gonna work out where they're accepting vouchers before our meeting.
Oh, okay.
But I think Larry came up with, we'll just do whatever we've got at our meeting, and any that come in after, obviously, will be the next month.
Okay.
It's just, it's just gonna be a little different.
All right.
So do we have to adopt a policy on accounts payable? And is there a policy for us to look at?
No, it's just more, you know, do you agree with doing them the way I suggested? You know, when they're due, we pay whatever we got in hand to pay, and...
Is there any other way to do it?
Not really.
No, I don't think there is.
That's where most people do, they, whatever comes in after, they pay the next month.
Yeah.
Do we have any vendors that are gonna be upset because they're not 30, or, I mean, we don't have a lot of vendors, so...
No, we don't.
They work with us. I've never had anybody not, and we have impressed account if somebody needed something.
And the reason that the county is doing this, because they're losing somebody in the office?
I think so, and they're closing the whole last week of December, um, Financial Services is closing, so I don't know if that's to save money.
Furlough, or...
Yeah, probably, they did it a few years ago when they were furloughs.
Okay.
I just emailed Ted also.
Is there any, um, so no action on that? I mean, that, it is...
I think we had that on there before we realized, well, it's just gonna be what it is gonna be.
I mean, the county, the county doesn't really give us much choice there.
No, they don't.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we need to do anything about it right now.
Not really, as long as you all agree with paying the bills that way, then that's all that's really necessary.
So we'll move on to, um, nominations of Port Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
I would like to elect Scott Cooper as Chair.
I would actually prefer to not do it for the third or fourth year in a row.
Oh, I figured you were so good.
And I would ask that you do it, and maybe I would reconsider next year, or Ted might be able to do it the following year, but I would, so I would nominate Commissioner Scott as the Board Chair for 2018.
Do we have a second on either one of these?
Okay, I'll accept.
All right.
Well, I nominate, oh, I guess we have to vote on that.
All those in favor for Commissioner Scott as Board Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
I said aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Vice Chair?
I nominate Scott Cooper.
I'll second Ted.
I have a nomination for myself to be the Vice Chair in 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, we're gonna do the public hearing on the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements. If anybody has input that they wanna give on our comprehensive scheme, please come up to the podium. And we will be doing public comment.
More, yeah.
As well, but this is the public hearing. I'll get back to where it was. Hold on, just, just one second. Do I have to close the meeting and go into the public hearing?
Yes.
So let's close the meeting, and we'll go into the public hearing. Okay, we're in the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. On, um, Earl Liddings again, was looking at your project improvements for the different Allen properties, one being on North Shore Road. Um, it said, uh, improve water, sewer, and other improvements. I was wondering what those other improvements may be, and if I could give them a piece of advice as a neighbor. I'm really tired of the dust in that parking lot, so if it can please get some new gravel or even paved, it would be really nice. But that's just my personal fetish, 'cause I have to wash my car about every day.
Can we bring the port truck by?
The what?
What time do you do that? Can we bring the port truck by?
The port truck by.
Oh.
Oh, to wash? Oh, I'll have them all parked on the side of the road at 5:00. But the other improvements, I was kinda wondering what may be going on there since I live right next to it, and probably, I'm probably the most impacted by that piece of property, 'cause I'm the only resident that lives on one side of it full-time.
The only thing that we've talked about is, um, maybe we don't have enough parking, and we'd look for something on the other side of the road for parking, but that's as far as we got. I don't think there's been any other discussion about improvements for the boat launch, but down at the dock, we've talked about doing some things down there.
Getting some more, there could be more parking. It's kind of tight.
Yeah, we just, yeah, it is tight. And then that, that parking lot across the street, as you know, is kinda hard to maneuver a trailer into there if there's multiple trailers in there. You gotta be a pretty spot-on backer.
It's really tight, okay, well, thanks.
Yeah, is that, is that fair, Larry? I can't think of anything else.
Yeah, no, we abandoned the idea of maybe doing an RV park there.
Yeah, wasn't enough.
You know, and you had a lot of input into that.
I, if it was flat, and you had an acre of nice land, and you can get 10 or 12, but I don't think you can get two in there, so...
And the only other thing we've done at, uh, the dock, we cut down those danger trees.
Oh, good.
They came down on Monday.
Yeah, we've been talking about that for a couple of years.
Those came down on Monday.
Oh, good.
There's been some, you know, like, like an idea was to maybe put a, put a locked gate on the pier, but it's a public dock, so it didn't get much traction, just for the three or four people that wore their boats out there that have been vandalized or ripped off.
So that's interesting. So the trees did come down, 'cause I did put a bid in that, and I never heard back on the bid results.
Yeah, they came down Monday.
Could you, what were the bid results, if you don't mind?
The what?
The bid results for the contract bids? 'Cause I sent over a form of bid.
Total price was, uh, I believe, 2,700.
And my bid of 2,300 didn't get looked at, or just didn't?
With no tax, you didn't include tax.
And a 10%, so what tax, it would've been 2,600?
No, it would've been more than that.
No, 9% on a thousand would be...
Well, then maybe I...
90 dollars?
Maybe I need to look at them again, because...
But it's okay, it's already down, so...
You can definitely look it up and let you know.
Yeah, I can.
Mine was at 2,350 dollars and 15%.
I'll, I'll scan them and send them to you.
It's okay, it's already down, but I, I didn't know.
No, we took what was the lowest bid, so I'll, but I'll send you all through it.
Well, I know with tax and everything, my bid wouldn't have been over 2,700, and I gave a 15% credit for the severance.
I'm saying 27 off the top of my head. It might, it might be less than that.
I, I thank you, though, for giving me an update on letting me know we didn't get the job until now.
You could've called me. But I'll, I will send you those tomorrow.
I have them right on my desk, all of them put together, so...
Yeah, if you wanna wait till, till the meeting's over, go upstairs, I'll show them to you.
Oh, actually, I haven't filed them, they're just sitting right there.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, at your last meeting, um, the Executive Director shared, uh, the, uh, letter that I sent on November 20th, and I, I hope you had a chance to, to read that complete letter. He didn't, um, include all my comments, so I'd like to, uh, um, read it if I might.
Just, uh, just for my clarification, are we talking about the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I sent you all a copy of the letter.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to find it real quick.
Yeah, and he, you know, Mr. Capola, um, publicly, he was on recording, read some of the things, but some of it didn't get captured. Um, and at several of your last meetings, the Executive Director reported that the RCO and funding agencies are more likely to fund projects that have considerable public input and public hearings. And I wholeheartedly agree. You have two people from the public here this evening, we really need to hear more. Um, and to that effect, I'd like to suggest that you survey your constituents, um, perhaps with a newsletter. I think you're familiar with this one that just came out from the Regional Fire Authority. Um, the school does the same thing. I think the port could put together their comprehensive scheme and send it out to your constituents and let them consider, and maybe they'll come to the public hearing or workshop and, you know, most of the, many of my neighbors don't realize they live in the Port of Allen's boundaries. I think, Judy, you mentioned that earlier on, you know, it's still, some folks don't realize, and a lot of them didn't realize there was a special meeting this evening on this comprehensive scheme. So I think after Commissioner Jackson is sworn in, that if a survey is completed, then it'd be a more appropriate time to develop and publicly discuss the projects and the priorities. The project that Mr. McCullough talked to you about tonight, if the community accepts that, it, it should be on the comprehensive scheme.
Yes.
Um, it shouldn't just be, maybe the community doesn't want it, um, so, um, when, and I, when I read through the scheme both, uh, last month and this evening, I, I thought there might be a, a change in the project priorities, um, and I think that, that project number, the development of a first-class soccer, baseball, combination sports complex should rise in priority. Um, and a survey would be one way to, to get your constituents' thoughts. I, I think it's a great idea, and I know it's supported, it was 2003 Belfair Subarea Plan, and many of the North Mason community, your constituents, support the concept, too. I know there's several that have tried to entertain some, um, discussions about it. So I think it'd definitely be there, and it should rise to a, a higher level. I think projects like Sweetwater Park, um, shouldn't be on there. Um, the proposed trail system, uh, discussion that, that Mr. McCullough talked about this evening, at the last meeting, um, Mr. Capola told you folks that in his Executive Director report, that he hadn't heard anything about it, and he's gonna put it on the back burner, and then here it comes this evening. Um, it, it, I just don't think it's a good idea to get involved with the trails, there's too many long-term obligations. I just heard, uh, yesterday that they're closing a portion of the Theller Trail where the bridge blew out again. Um, they're gonna shut it down, and, um...
Are they gonna get it fixed?
I don't know, but, you know, there's a, a case of, it's been an issue for a long time, it hasn't been maintained, and now it's, it's going away again. Uh, I'd hate to see the port get mired into a big trail system and all the maintenance that goes along with it. Um, a survey might be a really easy way to do it. I know you folks, um, put together, you know, those nice, um, calendars for four or 500 bucks. I think a survey or a newsletter like this explaining the comprehensive scheme and the opportunity for the public to... Great, a great thing. And it'd be a way to, to gauge public acceptance of certain, certain projects, whether they want a business industrial park, or whether they'd rather be more towards trails. It shouldn't be just the, the three commissioners deciding for the whole port, they should live with what they want to see. And I really look forward to many more meetings of the comprehensive scheme, and I hope that you can get more public to attend and, and weigh in. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna, any discussion amongst us?
I, I don't think I have anything in the room right now. Um, let me look at this again, see what else.
The only thing that, um, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear that, that we don't have to adopt, we can wait till Ted, yeah, and then, and then adopt this. We don't have to adopt this before January 1st, it's...
What, the... No, we just have to have it to RCO by March 1st.
So let's, uh, yeah...
So we need more public hearings for RCO.
Right.
So as long as it's, it's been done and approved, and you've gotta leave some time for...
I'm gonna approve it at tonight's meeting.
No, no.
We want Ted to weigh in, and we'll, we'll talk about a survey and...
And I'd like to do an open house where, you know, we've got some pictures and show-and-tell stuff, and, you know, make sure that we publicize it so we get people here, so we can answer their questions.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the hardest thing that's going on is getting people to come here.
Right.
Well, I do appreciate the idea about the survey. Um, we haven't, you know, Bonnie, uh, and when Bonnie was in, we had a survey, we put out a survey on what businesses they would like to see and everything.
Yeah, I still have a copy of that somewhere.
Yeah, right.
One thing everybody wanted was Burger King.
Yeah.
So I can't remember how much that cost. I know that we, we put out mailers ourselves, and we counted stuff. We were hand-counting stuff, so, um, you know, it's something that we could probably do.
The problem I have, I'm not sure how effective mailers are, but...
Well, there's a thing called...
You know, I think there was a time when they were real effective, but not so much anymore, it's more electronic.
Well, there's, you know, survey month.
But the question is, you know, getting a comprehensive email list.
Yeah, well, that's something that I've, we haven't done in a long time. Yeah. Well, that's something that I've, we haven't done in a long time. I always wanted to try to have a yearly newsletter.
I think it's something that we should have, we should develop and have anyway.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we could send out regular notices of meetings.
Yeah.
Among other things, and do those kinds of surveys. Because, you know, there's stuff like survey, they do it all for you.
Yep.
And, you know, we could use that, those kind of tools, but it's, we gotta have a comprehensive email list first.
Well, is that something you could work on, maybe, or, of course you can.
Well, what we know we can do is a newsletter, because it gets, you know, the, other people are doing newsletters, and you can buy the list from...
Well, what I had thought is, maybe what I might do is talk to the Chamber, maybe talk to, uh, the Hub, and, you know, everybody that's got...
True, yeah.
Email lists, you know, already organized, that they'd be willing to share, to where we could build one major comprehensive list of everybody in the district, and then be willing to share it with everybody that's helped us.
Good idea, yeah, that's great.
Could we put that on our January meeting agenda to discuss a newsletter or survey?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Great.
Okay, now we gotta set a date for the open house.
Well, it should be January.
Oh, you wanna close the public hearing?
Oh.
So no other discussion?
I don't have anything more. Do you have anything, Larry?
That's just for the comprehensive or the harbor scheme, right? Yes, yeah. We'll still have public comment at the end of the meeting. So I'm gonna close the hearing, reopen the public meeting, move on to, um, set a date for a public open house about the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements. And I think that, um, scheduling two days without my calendar is gonna be rough, so...
I'd like to do it in January.
Could we schedule it at our January second meeting?
Yeah, we could.
That's not gonna give us much time to advertise it. Can we schedule it?
We have to have the, the ten and twenty-day thing, so it can't be, it can't be advertised more than twenty days, but not less than ten days before whatever meeting is set.
For the open house.
So we have to have advertising in that timeframe.
What days do you usually have free, or do you, oh, you're laughing.
Um, Mondays, Mondays are good, Tuesdays aren't.
Well, we can have a January fifteenth.
Fridays are not good.
That's Monday.
Uh, January fifteenth, you wanna at least tentatively schedule a date?
Yes, because there's plenty of time to advertise.
So I would be...
Does it give you enough time to advertise?
No, let's, let's go into the, can we go into the following week? Well, that's...
You know, and I don't know that you all three need to be here for this.
I can't get a legal notice in until the twenty-first.
But I'd like to be here. We may not need to be here, but I'd like to be here.
What I was thinking is, I'm gonna put together a point, and we can just run it continually against the wall here.
The twenty-second, the eighth, no, 'cause I can do the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth.
Wednesday the seventeenth is okay.
More than ten days after the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-first and January?
Or would Thursday the eleventh work?
We're not gonna do one in December.
No.
I'm just trying to think all the time that, you know, I'm gonna need the...
Thursday the eleventh looks open.
I can't do it in tomorrow's, but I can do that one, that one.
You know, to come up with a final draft, and then we gotta have a public hearing about it.
And it's ten days after that.
Put all this work together to have a open house, and how do we get people to come?
You know, I can spam every Belfair group on Facebook over and over. You know, I've been doing that with...
Let the Chamber know, let the Hub know, let...
Yeah, and let them put it in there, you know, let them put it in their newsletters. You know, the Chamber's real good about sharing our information.
I wanna have enough time that, I don't wanna just check a box. I want it to be people coming.
No, and I do too. I don't wanna do all this work, and I don't, as I show up.
We could post some flyers around to you and stuff, like a QFC and...
I'm just thinking if we made it in February.
Advertise two times.
That's kinda close for me, for getting everything done.
We need to have some in January. We have to have some in January, too.
Monday the twenty-second is wide open for me.
You can't do the fifteenth. 'Cause aren't we required to have a certain amount before, a certain amount of public input?
Well, we've gotta have two public hearings. That's all we're bound to have by law. What I'm trying to do is accommodate RCO here.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanna have the open house and, you know, have some people show up besides Ken and Earl.
Seventeenth would work.
And Jeff.
And Jeff.
So is Martin Luther, that's the fifteenth, is that an actual?
That's a three-day weekend.
Oh, it is.
Oh, is that Martin Luther Day?
Yeah, I did schedule something that weekend, but I don't think people would come.
Well, we could, I'm pretty open. Now, the twenty-third is Port Day at Olympia, so we don't want it that day.
Yeah, let me get that on here. I didn't realize that.
Nothing is wrong with the twenty-second. We could do Monday the twenty-second.
Well, and, and you know, we gotta, we gotta figure out what Ted needs as well.
Yeah.
Ted's schedule's probably as difficult as mine, if not more so, 'cause he's gotta commute.
Tentatively.
Yeah, he told me he was gonna try to be here, but today.
Twenty-second?
I'm good with that.
Tentatively.
Earlier or still at six?
It's gotta be six.
Six?
Yeah, plus people.
Will that be the open house?
Yeah.
Anything else on the public open house? I will now open the floor to public comment. All free.
Just a few items I wanted to, um, address back to, uh, your potential management agreement with your agency, just, and the Port of Duwato. Uh, Dave Haugen was elected as the new Commissioner, uh, so I believe he's representing District Three, our district. I reside in there as well. Uh, one of the questions I had is, I was a little confused as to, uh, you, Mr. Coppola, had actually contacted Ted and had to call Ray, because the two of them discussing port business, it would've been a, a closed meeting, I guess. So Ted was, or a non-public meeting, what?
A public meeting. It would be an illegal public, I mean, if they met, took that notification.
And so Commissioner Edwards was acting as a Commissioner, and that's why, uh, you couldn't have another one that way.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And I wanna...
And I wanted to clarify the timeline with you two, just for, 'cause I know you're concerned about the transparency issue. He contacted us on, I think it was the twenty-seventh, but I'm, I'd have to double-check. Uh, we met on the twenty-ninth, and we were going to discuss at our, at our meeting on the fourth, and then Scott had to go out of town, which is why we didn't. But it wasn't like there was this big, long time, like where we were trying to hunt, or was just, you know, about cheat table, but...
No, and, and, and I'll, and I'm, and I'll, and I'll kinda get to, um, what actually just transpired at the Port of Duwato meeting as well. Uh, now, again, this is coming, um, from another person there, so it is not actual meeting minutes, but, um, Commissioner Mo asked that the meeting minutes in Duwato reflect, that he had no idea there was a special meeting in Allen asking for any discussions and a potential management agreement. At this point, he has no support for what is going on, and a phone call was not any direction or agreement to be made. Contradiction, the Port of Duwato should've, with its citizens, actually passed a motion to outreach to the Port of Allen for help, and not the Port of Allen outreach-ing to help Duwato. So at that point, right now, Ray Mo is extremely covering his meeting minutes in there, and Ted Edwards acknowledged that he did his at-reach as a citizen and not a Commissioner, which is in contradiction to what you just said. So this transparency...
Well, I assumed he was reaching out as a Commissioner.
But this is the confusing, so just to close this chapter down, we want help, we need help, but there needs to be a better transparency, and any meeting moving forward should actually, I feel, stimulate from the Port of Duwato Commissioners, now that there's three, to ask for the help. And that we do, and we do need help, but anyway, we'll see you on Wednesday, uh, next month. And I'll also like to get a copy of the three bits, so, thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
And, uh, thank you.
Ken Van Busker, um, just wanted to follow up with what Mr. Eddings just said. Um, I, I know the, the issue was tabled last month, but the, the public that was watching the meeting didn't know what it was that was tabled, just that it was an agreement uh, with another agency. Apparently, you folks all knew what it was, but the public didn't know what it was about, so just wanted to, to say that. Um, I, I do have a little bit of experience with those grants, uh, having gone to some of the grant hearings for RCO, and they do like to see a lot of public input. They're gonna wanna look at, you know, who attended the meeting and that sort of thing, so I, if you don't get the grant submitted by March, you really gotta do, doing public outreach. So, lastly, um, I wanted to suggest that the Commissioners, um, might wanna review and audit the port-owned equipment to assure that, that you're complying with that mobile device policy that you just adopted last year. Um, text messaging is highly discouraged, and it's to be used only in an emergency. Um, there was some going on at the last meeting. Um, it's inviting public records requests, and you know they're costly, and it's not an efficient use of taxpayer dollars. Um, you kept the last meeting open for an extended timeframe for an individual to arrive. Um, the person never showed up. Um, I came a couple minutes late to a meeting, a budget hearing, and, um, wasn't allowed to testify, even after you had been made aware that was coming. Um, it's really not, it's not very impartial, uh, and fair, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Skid?
Anybody want to join the meeting, or would entertain a motion for adjournment?
I do have to say about the text, um, we can't, we cannot text between the Commissioners. That's what we've definitely decided on.
That's law. The policy was like, conduct port business, no texts.
Correct. And with, um, Mr. Peterson being on the agenda and expecting he had an emergency, so that was the only way that really could efficiently communicate without making the phone call during the meeting, so...
Oh, that was a text?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, so...
I texted him, and I got the text right here.
And it is on the port phone.
I just said, "Are you coming or not?"
So, I don't know, it's not like a life-or-death emergency, but it was a form of communication without, um, a lot of disruption, so...
You don't have to explain, I just know what your policy says, and I just...
I don't think you do understand what the policy says, because it doesn't address that. It says that the Commissioners will not text between themselves and create a serial meeting, and it gives direction about how text is to be used.
Well, I, I just asked the Commissioners to, to audit, please look at your policy, look at some of your employees' devices.
Entertainment for adjournment?
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.
Here, I need some...